Public comment for any non agenda items.
Good evening, council and everyone else here. I'm Nancy Griffin.
Yes, Nancy.
I'm sorry.
We're public comment.
Oh, you're doing public comment?
I'm doing a presentation.
That comes after.
Yeah, that comes after.
Oh, that comes after? Okay, I'll wait.
Yep.
My mistake.
Thank you.
Hey, I wasn't paying attention.
So I see there's no public comment regarding items not on the agenda. So at this time, I will call our legislative meeting to order. Madam Clerk, can you please call the roll?
Bub?
Here.
John Esquie?
Here.
Buckingham?
Here.
Washington?
Here. And now may we all stand, all that can stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Aye.
Aye.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You may be seated. At this time, we will take action on previous meeting minutes. I make a motion to accept the meeting, our legislative meeting minutes from January 21st, 2025, and our committee meeting minutes from January 29th, 2025.
Second.
It has been seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed? That moves forward. Up next this evening, we have presentations this evening, awards and announcements. First, we have our Bicycle and Pedestrian Project update by Nancy Griffin, our city planning, and Dave Rudolph, our electrical supervisor. They will give a brief update on the Bicycle and Pedestrian Project.
And action.
The floor is yours.
Thank you. Good evening, Nancy Griffin, city planner. So I'm just going to give a brief update on our Bicycle and Pedestrian update for that plan and Dave's. So yeah, I'm not going to be able to read that. But anyway, just briefly, it is York County planning as well. And we are in the circle areas, if you can see on the screen there, where tentatively, we are going to do a bike share. We once, prior to COVID, we did have a bike share program at that time. This one will be a little much, a little more sophisticated, more up to date, more 2025. But it will be initiated by York County and, but it will be, they will all be, the locations will all be in the city, except for one will be in Spring Garden Township. And as we go, we're going to have some public meetings and get public input. Once it is initiated and done, we, I will have access to any data that's collected to see how many people are using it, which spots are most, more used than others, and what time of day, and things of that nature. So I think it's going to be, you know, really good. You can flip to the next one, and that's kind of going to show you on here, it's kind of like, next screen is like a timeline for the different things and the different parts of it, the different pieces of it. And as it goes along and as it progresses through, you know, I'll come back and we'll keep everybody updated. And we'll do some things to, you know, let people know that they can contact me if they want some more information and then some public input on the actual project.
So Nancy, some of the stuff, so some of the data they're going to collect also with the locations. The locations are not set in stone right now, so with some of the information we get, they'll, they'll actually decide, you know, where to place these bike shares. And also, even once they're installed, if, if it doesn't produce the numbers that they're thinking it would, should have produced, a location may be shifted one way or the other to try and maximize their, their benefit to the public. So it'll be, it'll be a moving project, moving target, really.
Does anybody have any questions?
I do. So these are the, the pay to ride that.
Yes.
Okay. And can you tell us what YAMPO stands for? Y-A-M-P-O?
Yes, York Area Municipal Planning Organization. So it's a conglomerate of city employees. Nancy and I sit at the request of the mayor on the, on the committee. And then there's county transportation employees, and then several employees throughout the county, you know, there are municipalities, so.
Some from PennDOT as well.
Some, yeah, a couple from PennDOT also.
And review again, there, there'll be 12 docking stations, 11 in the city, but what were, what were the circles on the map? I thought those were.
Tentative locations for.
For only five, not the other six.
Correct. I mean, those are just tentative locations at this point.
Okay.
It's in, you know, kind of sort of the.
Yeah, the first, the first five you see there are, are the first five to go. The other, the other arrows or the other red dots you see on the screen there are tentative additions.
Thank you.
When do you estimate that the project will begin?
Well, it's, it's already in the beginning stages now, so it's kind of in the talking points, talking stages. And we do have another meeting next Thursday.
Next Thursday. So meeting with you folks tonight is part of the process to secure the funding through YAMPO and, and the rest of the grant. I can't remember the name of the grant. Sorry, I'm drawing a blank.
There's a, I think it's a, is there an AARP grant?
O-R-L-P, O-R-L-P.
And if you receive the grant, then when would the, the project or the stations be installed?
So that would be at York County's, what they're doing, because they're actually, as far as I understand, they're funding the project.
They're funding the whole project.
Correct.
Yeah.
So it's just that they're placing different places, but a lot of them in the city.
Yeah, really, really, the only thing we're doing is accepting the, because like any other grant for us, we're accepting the, we're accepting, accepting the bike program. No money for us, no signatures or anything. I think it was just a matter, we had to inform you that we're going to put these stations in.
And then to, you know, have the input of the residents in the city too. So yeah, they may even be more substantial to, you know, well, maybe this isn't going to work, maybe it's better over here, you know, where the need is. And then it's also recreational, some of it will be need and some of it will be just for pleasure.
Thank you.
Yep.
Up next for our presentations this evening, we have a presentation update from Downtown Inc. Sarah O'Brien, Director, will be giving a brief report on Downtown Inc.'s 2024 year in review and a 2025 sneak peek this evening.
Good evening, council. Sarah O'Brien, I'm your Director of Downtown Inc. Thank you so much for having me here this evening. Just wanted to do an update on some of our 2024 accomplishments and partnerships, and then provide you just a brief sneak peek into 2025 and beyond. I know everyone behind the dais knows this, but Downtown Inc. is the organization working to drive, encourage, and enhance investment in downtown York. We are a strategic affiliation with the York County Economic Alliance, which helps us make things happen in York City and throughout the county. That's, that affiliation happened in 2018. Downtown Inc. itself is a merger between Main Street York and the York Business Improvement District Authority, which we are proud to manage on behalf of the city. You can see on the screen, we've got a map of the bid for those watching from home or in the audience. A little historical context, the current bid is set to expire at the end of 2025. Since 1998, the bid is on a five-year cycle, so we will be coming back to you this summer with our five-year bid business plan, seeking renewal of that Business Improvement District. So we'll be doing some engagement this spring with our stakeholders. We are not planning on asking for a millage increase. We are going to just be seeking renewal at the same level that we have been since 1998. So just a little context, because you could be hearing a lot about bid renewal this year. Downtown Inc. really focuses our work on four pillars. Promotion, that's promotion and marketing of the downtown district and York City as a whole, as well as supporting and amplifying the messages of our small business community. Economic development, which we do both through project development through the YCEA, as well as supporting and nurturing our entrepreneur and small business community. Placemaking, which is creating a great environment downtown. We'll show some of those highlights here in a minute. And then public safety, which is our fourth pillar, which we could not do without our partnership with York City Police Department. So going to breeze through some highlights. I was told I only have 10 minutes, so we're going to do these fast. I do have some highlight sheets that I passed out behind the dais, and if anyone in the audience would like a copy to take with you, just let me know. But thanks to our partnership with Explore York, we were able to install 50 new pedestrian and vehicular wayfinding signs downtown to help people navigate to our wonderful destinations. Our downtown clean and green team, which is a partnership with ABM Janitorial Services, funded by the York County Solid Waste Authority and Better, or the Powder Mill Foundation, its first year collected over 9,000 pounds of loose litter and debris in downtown. They spent 5,000 man-hours cleaning graffiti, working on beautifying the landscape by picking up weeds, all to make downtown clean and green. We raised over $1 million this year through philanthropic giving, special grants, to help really amplify the $112,000 bid assessment that we got. So we are very thankful for the support of all of our partners and grantors that allow us to do the great work that we do in downtown. Special shout out, I did not know that Officer Nice and Baby Cooper were going to be in the audience. We're very excited that she is back from maternity leave. But every week, her and Jean Fells spend at least 30 hours a week downtown, monitoring the streets, building relationships with our business owner, and we are so thankful for that partnership and their support. We opened our Downtown Resource Center, where Officer Nice and Jean Fells' offices reside in April of last year. Since that time, we've hosted over 100 different meetings with small businesses and entrepreneurs inside the Downtown Resource Center. We offer bilingual support on Monday afternoons as well. We had over 40 businesses attend our fall training on addressing antisocial behaviors downtown. 50 new or expanded businesses were welcomed and celebrated in 2024. That includes a lot of our micro businesses at both Penn and Central Market. We awarded over $149,000 in Bloom Loans and Grants through our Bloom Business Empowerment Center to businesses inside the Business Improvement District. We also awarded over $12,000 in First Friday Grants to small businesses, thanks to the generous partnership of Wellspan, so that they can host experiences and activities and drive traffic downtown the first Friday of every month. $15,000 was awarded in welcoming communities grants, thanks to our partnership with Better York Powder Mill Foundation. And I do want to announce that the, this year's welcoming communities grant application just opened yesterday. This is a grant program that is designed to support free, accessible, diverse, and inclusive events. We're really excited that this year's dollar amount will be $18,000. We are allocating a special pot of $3,000 for events specifically at Foundry Park to try to encourage programming and entice visitation in that area. Over $31,000 was awarded through our 12-town facade grant program to businesses in the Business Improvement District to enhance their facade. There's a photo of Lilybird Tea Company's improvements there. We welcome 200 downtown revitalization professionals from across the Commonwealth and beyond to the Pennsylvania Downtown Center Conference this summer, thanks to those council members that were able to join us. We secured a $15 million raised grant for Kadoris Creek Beautification Project. We are currently in the permit phase of that project and looking forward to really transforming the landscape of downtown York with the Kadoris Greenway. I know Silas spoke to you guys a few months ago about that, all of those undertakings. We promoted over 150 different events and promotions and 200 unique businesses through our various marketing and promotion channels this year. We have over 65,000 followers on our downtown York PA channels. I'd be remiss if I did not encourage you to go and follow us on Instagram and Facebook and TikTok if you're not already doing so. We were really excited to partner with the York Revolution and Wellspan Park for the inaugural Bright Nights campaign. We had over 35 small businesses downtown participate in a special restaurant and retail promotion offer. And they welcomed over 20,000 visitors to downtown to see the lights at Wellspan Park. We celebrated 12 Merchants of the Month, and 14 different businesses were awarded Downtown First Awards at our annual Downtown First Award Program in August. 20-plus businesses joined our pilot Downtown Disket Program with York College of Pennsylvania. We're really excited to unveil a much more robust program later this year to encourage visitation from alumni, students, and faculty at York College to downtown. Over 100 hours were logged by a reimagined downtown ambassador team. We're really excited. You will start seeing and hearing more from them this year. They really are an extension of our staff, help us be more, better eyes and ears on the ground to connect with our small business community and help us identify challenges and opportunities. A brief look ahead for this coming year, trees, trees, trees. We were very blessed to receive a half million dollar tree grant, so we're going to be doing a tree canopy study. We're working in conjunction with Tom's wonderful team at the Parks Department to hopefully do some tree plantings in downtown this year. Additional public art planning with the York County, or the Cultural Alliance of York County, focusing on trying to determine a maintenance plan for a lot of the public art that exists and continuing to bring new and exciting culturally relevant arts to downtown. We are also focused, public safety-wise, Jean and Officer Nice and Commissioner Muldoon and his team do such a great job that we're really going to start focusing our efforts on trying to change the public perception of public safety in downtown York throughout the county. We're excited about those efforts. We will continue plugging away on the Kadoris Greenway, the Yorktown Hotels commercial spaces and ballpark commons. In the next 60 days, we will be producing a new downtown investment guide to try to encourage additional outside investment into the bid. We're also kind of fine tuning our business recruitment and retention efforts this year and excited to see what that looks like. As I mentioned before, the bid renewal is one of the big projects on my to-do list this year, which you guys will hear more about. And also looking at better ways to connect the three micro districts. We hosted our first merchant meetup earlier this year at the York County History Center. We had over 120 small businesses from the three different micro districts join us. So working to, to really bring everyone together. Obviously, we are hopeful that we will be able to create some additional partnerships to create a sustainability plan for our ABM Clean and Green Team. Right now, we have three more additional years of funding for them. But looking towards the future, we will probably be back before you at some time to have additional conversations about how we can help that team continue on the ground. And then we want to continue to grow our downtown ambassador program. I do want to take a moment to thank the city of York. The majority of our placemaking and beautification projects, the majority of our small business support and economic development efforts cannot help it happen without our partnership. So a special shout out to Dave Rudolph and his team, and Tom Landis and his team, and of course, the York City Police Department, to Nona's team at the Department of Community and Economic Development for helping us help downtown grow and thrive. And for the most exciting news of the year, I believe it is the greatest thing to happen to downtown York since the Articles of Confederation were signed almost 275 years ago. And a special thanks to Mayor Halfrick. The number one tourist destination in the world, public restrooms are officially coming to downtown York this year. We are so excited that the city allocated ARPA funding to help us bring this much-needed amenity and necessity to downtown York. So we will continue to work with Dave's team, and we're working with York Water to get, hopefully get these ordered and installed. And I promise you, we will have the biggest porta potty party to celebrate when they arrive. So thank you very much for your partnership. We appreciate all that you guys do for Downtown Inc. I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Sarah.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Just a brief comment. Sarah, you might want to coordinate the bike stations with the porta potties or look at that as a possible coordination.
For our meeting scheduled, our legislative meeting, next meeting will be held here in council chambers on Tuesday, February 18th at 6 o'clock PM. All agenda items are due by 12 noon on February the 12th. Our council committee meeting is scheduled for Wednesday, February 26th at 6 o'clock PM in council chambers. Agenda items are due by 12 noon on February 19th. Up next, we have our status of prior committee referrals in regards to our FOP contract. Council heard from Business Administrator Kim Robertson at the status of the FOP collective bargaining agreement. The agreement is still being finalized, and the tentative date for consideration of final passage is slated for council's February 18th, 2025 legislative meeting. In regards to Comp Plan 2044, City Council heard from Jessica Fieldhouse, the CS Davidson, the Comp Plan process, and answered questions from council. Public comment on the Comp Plan is still being received. Submit comments to Nancy Griffin, our city planner, at 101 South George Street, York PA. Council set a public hearing on the Comp Plan from March 18th, 2025, 6 o'clock PM here in council chambers, and council will consider adoption of the plan that same evening. Moving along to our legislative gen, agenda, up next, we have Resolution Number 10.
So introduced.
Before we go on, I'd just like to recognize State Representative Carol Hill Evans in the audience here. Thank you for joining us. All right, that is Resolution Number 10, introduced by Betsy Buckingham, a resolution accepting the recommendations of Harb for issuing a certificate of appropriateness for work to be done at 50 North George Street.
Took a sec. Call for a vote. Second.
It has been moved and seconded. Is there any council comment regarding this matter this evening?
I, I do have some comments. I wasn't clear when I read the minutes exactly what the project entailed. Thank you for being here, Mr. Bucknell. So I reached out to a member of Harb. I was concerned about the flashiness of the signs, quite honestly, and the change of appearance. The board member that I reached out to identified himself as probably the most skeptical member of the Harb Board, who actually really came to appreciate the project and, and think that it was a great move. And since you're here, maybe you'd like to make some comments about the project? To the, yeah, thanks.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Todd Fogdahl. I am the president and CEO at the Appel Center for the Performing Arts. Yeah, just a couple of weeks ago, we met with, with Harb to talk about one of our many Capitol projects that we are in the midst of, over a three-year renovation project to care for, update, provide for York's historic theaters. And specifically, two exterior pieces. First, replacing the, the marquee signs or the message boards that are currently over the doors to each theater. That would really be a replacement. The newer element was, is to replace poster cases. There are six poster cases as you're entering the Strand Theater under an alcove, and there are two poster cases on the exterior of the Capitol Theater. And to replace those with digital technology, to replace those with digital signs. We would really envision using these really as posters. They might change occasionally, but they would be, you know, largely static. They are set to, basically, the, the lighting of those signs is, is, is set to sort of align with where the sun is at or where it's not, so these things are not just glaringly bright at night. If you're walking by, yes, you can still see them, but it really looks more like, you know, a poster that's being illuminated from the outside.
Thank you.
Sure.
Thanks.
Is there any other comments or questions from council? Any comments or questions from the public regarding this? Madam Clerk, can you please call the vote?
Yep. Bub?
Yes.
John Esquie?
Yes.
Buckingham?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes, and that moves forward. Up next for our new business, we have Resolution Number 11.
So introduced.
Resolution Number 11, introduced by Betsy Buckingham. Be it resolved that council consent to the following appointment of Blade Klein from an alternate member to a regular member of the zoning hearing board to fill the unexpired term of Corey Carden, which term shall expire January 1st, 2029. Appointment made by the mayor of Nathan Engler as a member of the York Housing Authority to fill the unexpired term of James Crosby, which term shall expire the first day of April, 2029. And the reappointment by the mayor of Eric Kirkland as a member of the General Authority, which term shall expire first Monday of January, 2030.
Call for a vote.
Second. We don't have a question.
It has been moved and seconded. Are there any questions or comments from council?
Got it. Okay, thanks. Yes, thank you. Just a quick one. I'm aware that Mr. Eric Kirkland is, has his origins in York City. I did not, I do not know if he lives in the city or does business in the city, because I was reading about the requirements to be on the General Authority. Can somebody speak to his residency? Maybe he lives here. I don't know.
He does. He does live in the city.
Okay, that's it. Thank you.
You're welcome. Are there any other council comments or questions? Are there any public comments or questions regarding this matter? Madam Clerk, please call the vote.
Give me a second.
While you're talking, I'll just say quickly, I would thank Blade Klein for stepping into a permanent role from the alternate position.
Ready? Bub?
Yes.
John Esquie?
Yes.
Esquie? Buckingham?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes, and that moves forward. I believe we have Mr. Klein here with us this evening. Is Nathan here? Hi, Nathan.
Oh, Nathan is here.
I don't see Mr. Eric Kirkland here.
All right, Nathan.
So I'm sure Diana will like you all to.
Stand at the podium.
Stand at the podium to take your oath of office. And I'll turn it over to our clerk, Diana Thomas.
Get up there, boys.
To thank everybody again, our Station One project is getting closer to completion. I wanted to let everybody know that. And again, I wanted to thank Ms. Evans for her help with, with that project. It's been a slow project, but we did move the engine back, so the engine is running back out of the station. And we still have some, some items yet to complete before it's 100% back up. But I just want to let everybody know that we're definitely moving underway. And again, and thank you for your support with that too, Ms. Evans.
Thank you, Chief Sliger. And I believe State Representative Carol Hill Evans has some comments to add this evening.
Thank you. Ouch. Shocking. Okay, that's what happens when the state comes into the local level, right? So anyway, I just want to say thank you for this opportunity. I'll keep it short. I want you to know that today we received the governor's proposal for his budget. And if we could get the things that he wants, the future looks bright for the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania. So I would encourage you to please keep paying attention. Each week I put out a newspaper, newsletter, and in it, we will say all of the bills that we're passing, but it also will give you updates on the governor's budget, the things that he is proposing. I am happy to say that he is proposing additional funding for our emergency services, including our veterans, for our schools, which is always important. And so I just wanted to let you know that it's here. We've received it today. We are going to be holding meetings. You can look in the newspaper or online to find out when those budget hearings are going to be held. They will be held in, in Harrisburg. But they are all open to the public. And if you have any questions about anything that you read, see, or hear, please feel free to reach out to my office or to send me an email and let me know. Thank you.
Thank you. And do we have any other comments? All right, our meeting is adjourned this evening. Oh, yes, we do. Yes, sir. No.
Two quick requests.
Identify yourself first, even though I know who you are.
Oh, oh, sorry. My name is, I'm a city resident. My name is Sharif Humay. And I think everyone knows the epidemic we have of homelessness. It's heart-wrenching. It's inhumane to see people out in the cold, or it's no good season to be homeless. I have a good friend who's a resident of here. He lives in Florida, and he's the first person to have a mobile shelter in the United States. His name is Anthony Zorbaugh, and he actually came on my TV show, Dour Power, and he told me to request it, see if it's any steps we can make to bring one here. He has one in Florida, and he has a mobile shelter in Chicago, showers, beds. It's, I think something that's very much needed here, so he asked me to take the, see what steps would need to be taken, ARPA money, whatever, to bring a mobile shelter here in York. And he was raised here in York. He went to York Catholic, and I went to school with him and his brother. So I think it's. So I think it's a serious matter and much needed. And you can go to Dignity Bus on Facebook and see the actual buses, mobile shelters that he has. So I was just seeing what steps could be taken to bring a mobile shelter here in York. Another request I have, I'd like to thank the city, Ms. Agwena, and Ms. Brown, right?
Buckingham.
Yeah, for helping with bringing a street in the memory of Mr. Beatty and Mr. Ahmed Saifullah, AKA Clara Sexton, rest in peace. I just wanted to see if we could give someone their flowers who's still alive there. And I want to make it clear, the family didn't ask me to do this, and the individual I'm talking about didn't ask me to do this. I'm talking about John Jamison, who used to have Brother John's Grocery, to see if we could have a marker or something in honor of him out Parkway. His store still has a lot of impact on people, even though he hasn't had it. He's not sick, and again, he didn't ask me to do it, but I believe we should give people flowers while they're still here out, and that's Out Parkway there. And it will be with his family's permission that I'm doing this on my, on my own too. And he's still active in the community. Again, his store has had a lot of positive impact in that area out there.
Thank you. I'm going to get your contact, your contact information after the meeting, and we'll provide your request to the administration.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. At this time, it is 6:37 PM, and our meeting is adjourned. Everyone have a wonderful evening.